Good to go.
Okay, I'd like to call to order our Monday, November the 16th, 2020 Special Board of Education Work Session. For the record, our meeting is currently being livestreamed on the District YouTube Channel. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Gary, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Merschbrach.
Aye.
Director Borchiding.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye.
And could we hold one moment, please? Jen Newman is trying to join us and it says it's not letting her in.
Okay.
Laura, was your plan then to send her the new invite to the meeting again?
Well, she did try and it said that she, the host, removed her from the meeting and still not letting her in. Okay, well, I wonder if she can call in. I'm gonna mute myself and I'll see if I can work with her while you continue ahead.
Should I continue? Okay.
I'll try to work with her.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move into our work session, pandemic and return to learn plan, and I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Bush.
Thank you, President Humbles, and please just see me as a facilitator for your discussion tonight, and also hopefully a resource to answer any questions that might surface, as well as things that maybe we need to consider for ongoing conversations and discussions. So thanks so much for organizing for this evening. So I think before we get into the conversation, this is really the only slide I have to share, and that is just a reminder of our norms as we work together as a body of board, what to keep in mind as we're having discussions. And so if you look at these five norms, tonight's discussion is probably more open and you all will be generating some questions that you would like to discuss together. And so it might look a little different than presentation and then question back and forth. So if you think about that format, maybe what norm you might need to zoom in on the conversation. And one thing that might be helpful, I also think since this is just an hour and the governor does speak at 6 o'clock, maybe if we can make a commitment to each other to be all in during this next hour and keep our voices and our eyes on this screen. And maybe, I know that I've already pushed my own cellphone to the side so that we don't have any distractions and can kind of get down to the work here tonight. So if you take a look at the five bullets, maybe zoom in on the couple that you think that you're going to need as we move the conversation forward this evening. And when you have that norm in mind, if you would just give me a thumbs up. All right, looks like we are ready. So tonight, calling this return to learn guidance as it relates to COVID-19, we've obviously had to ebb and flow already within our two months of school, not quite two months of school, and want to make sure there's clarity, but also we have a year, the rest of the school year ahead of us. So it's a good time for this discussion. And as we move forward, what the board would want to make sure that we keep in mind and things even to better understand as we move forward into the rest of the school year. So without any further ado, then I'm going to stop sharing my screen and we'll open it up for board discussion. And President Humbles, perhaps maybe we'll kick it off with you and with any sort of additional comments you want to make. And then I think we can really just make sure all voices, that equity of voices at the table, and make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask their questions or comments. And I also have additional resources to hopefully help support the team tonight. So President Humbles, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. And this will be a great time as board members. I know we get questions from our constituents and sometimes we might not know how to answer them. So this is looking at clarifying, so if someone would ask you a question, we could give them the right answer. Because I know one of my ongoing questions is that I hear is, why don't we as a district just do, I know there's the proclamation that the governor has, but what are the consequences if we don't follow them? Because sometimes people are saying, why don't you guys do your own thing? So if you could answer that question, that would be helpful.
Sure, let's start there. So you're right, the governor did have proclamation and part of that proclamation was offering 50% in-person instruction. And then, of course, we've recently experienced the waiver to go to remote learning. We qualified actually for two waivers. One was because of the derecho and we didn't have access to our buildings. And then the other, of course, was due to COVID. And so the consequences of not being in alignment with the Department of Education and the governor's proclamation, there's a couple. One would be that we could face accreditation issues. So if we are not abiding by the guidance, then it's potential that the instructional hours would not be counted in a remote, if we didn't have permission to be in remote. And if the instructional hours are not counted, let's just use this as a high school example, then you're putting credits into question for high school students, which means then you think about a senior right now, that is their senior credits in order to graduate, but would impact all of our kids potentially. Some of our colleagues in other districts have had to face that issue and were doing what they thought were to be best for their local decision, but they've actually had to offer in-person instruction because of accreditation. And so in addition to that, it can, as the governor said in one of her press conferences, the administrator in charge could also potentially, their license could be called into question for not following Iowa code, which then if a license is called into question, there's all kinds of procedures for that. But then potentially what happens is that administrator could lose their license if they're not following Iowa code. However, I think that would be a long process to get to that. Really, the primary thing is kids losing credits and accreditation.
Other questions from the board, please?
So Superintendent Bush, along those lines, then it would be the governor and/or the Department of Ed who would make that call about accreditation? Or is it the accreditation organization?
The Department of Ed oversees all things for graduation requirements, et cetera. So it really would be the Department of Education.
Okay.
And they're
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And I'll just say, and they are an entity of the governor's directives. So yeah. Go ahead, Director Newman.
I was just gonna say, I apologize. I had trouble getting on the line. It kept telling me that I'd been rejected. So I'm sorry for being late. And I'm sure I missed some good stuff, but I will try to catch up.
We are glad you're here and you're definitely not rejected. Well, and so a couple of other things I think that have come to my attention, I'm not sure if this is a general question for everyone. However, we have been approved for our waiver, and I think that's also the clarity for part of the process. So although we are required to offer at least 50% of instruction, students are not required to take that offering. And then in addition to that, we have been approved for waivers to go to remote instruction. So six of our buildings have been in remote instruction, as you all will know, and that was due to building damage. But then most recently, we did make the call last week to apply because of COVID-19 impact on our district. And we were approved for that waiver, and we've indicated that through November 24th. That would be up to the Thanksgiving holiday, and through the Thanksgiving holiday, kids would come back on November 30th. So some of the questions might be, I was asked this in a press conference the other day, is that really realistic given our current situation? So that might be a question from you all tonight. So in the current scenario, what would that actually mean? And what would, and even some administrators have asked that, would we apply for another waiver? And what would that look like? And why would we do that? So when we apply for the waiver specifically for COVID reasons, we're only given 14 days of remote instruction at a time. So it's not like I could apply now and say, we predict the next month's gonna be really rough, so we want to recommend this till December 23rd. We have to do it for every two weeks.
Wow.
That would be the process if we were to choose to continue and apply again.
So that's 14 calendar days, not 14 school days?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions from the board?
Superintendent Bush, let's just start right there. If we are, as a county, still over 20% positivity, you know, at what point would we want to see our county positivity rate below 20% in order to not request a waiver for another 14 days after November 30th? Any other considerations that you're taking into account right now for that?
Yeah, I will be glad to share that document that I shared last week as well. And sometimes the graphic, I know it helps me at least make a little sense of it. But I think you ask also a good question that I really did appreciate from Director, oh, wrong, sorry about that. I'm sharing the wrong thing here. Are you seeing my screen share? How come it won't let me go to? Stop share. All right. I'm gonna take that again. Sorry about that. Let's try that one more time. So Director Lebo did indicate, here we go, that's better, sorry about that. You could see, but I couldn't. Director Lebo did indicate that this is intended as guidance. You are gonna see on here for community transmission, both minimal to moderate and substantial, which is where we are right now. We are at substantial community transmission. You will see nowhere on this document does it indicate staff absences. And when we applied for both Hoover and Johnson for remote instruction, that was not just to community spread, but it was due to really staff absences that we had exhausted all measures and we couldn't sustain those two buildings. When you looked at our district as a whole, I've had some questions from families, why didn't we look at this building by building last week? Why did we apply as the entire district? We absolutely had some buildings that were not impacted significantly with absences, both for students or for staff right now. But we did have departments at the district level, transportation being one of them, that services all of our schools. We had over 22, about 22 staff members that were gone from transportation. That impacted our entire system. But this is to kind of go directly where you were going, Director Merschbrach. When we have this substantial uncontrolled situation, it's not only greater than the 20% positivity in the county average, which I think today was still 24% for that 14-day county average, we also have healthcare capacity concerns. So what changed last week, and I emailed the entire staff on Monday and said, be prepared at any moment to go. What changed from Monday to Tuesday was that we were experiencing absences amongst our adults. So did the healthcare system. So it went from over the weekend, then the healthcare system had a depletion of some of their employees, and they had an increase in COVID cases, and they were running out of beds. So that's what caused their capacity concerns. So by Tuesday morning, when I was able to speak with Lynn County Public Health, they had gone from maybe getting there to being there, to substantially uncontrolled healthcare concerns. So to me, it's both, it's maybe three of these things. One, we absolutely want to see our positivity rate get below that 20%. We also have to pay attention to the healthcare capacity concerns. We are the fourth largest employer in the county, and 16,000 kids and their families, we are a huge, huge part of our community. So we definitely impact the healthcare system. And then also that we would have employees well enough and enough of them to be here to continue our programming. So it's all of those things that we need to consider. We were at over a 20% positivity rate, and we didn't have that, quite the concern of the healthcare capacity. It was like over the weekend, a week ago, but it changes very, very quickly. So I think all of those things would need to be in consideration for us to absolutely consider November 30th as our return date. So we have to keep an eye on this very closely over the next week.
Are you in contact with Lynn County Public Health on a daily basis, more or less?
Multiple times a day. Yeah, yeah, very much. Both, if it's not me, our district nurse, Sandy Byard, is constantly in communication with them. But I cannot believe how responsive they've been, as many districts as they have to serve, and everybody. They serve all organizations. But just a shout out to Heather Meter from Lynn County Public Health and Tricia, they respond immediately, like I hear within an hour from them when I have questions. But daily, yes. May not be as much this week because we are not applying for something, but I'm also on the Lynn County Emergency Team and the COVID Task Force Team. I represent the schools with John Spear, and so we're meeting, I think, three times this week.
Just to follow up a little bit with that, last week, Superintendent Bush, when you joined Senator Liz Mathis and Heather Meter for that press conference, I thought that was really a powerful way to send out the message and the importance of community participation if we want to get our kids back to school. I don't know if there are any further plans in the works to do something more like that, where we're directly communicating with the community. And I guess the question I really have for my fellow board members is there something that we should be doing as a board collectively to communicate that same message to the public that our schools really are just a reflection of what's happening in our community? And frankly, we're like isolated here, but we went for a drive the other day and went by Lyndale, and it's just, the parking lot was full of cars. So I'm not sure the community is getting the message that we need them to get. And is, do we have a role to play in communicating that message? So I'd be interested in feedback from the rest of you.
Just remember too, this would be consensus and not an action item.
Director Garlock, I think if there's something effective that we can do in order to get that message out to the community, I'm all for it. I don't know what form that takes. I agree that what the superintendent did was powerful and it certainly, you know, got the eyes of the news media, which is, you know, the way they get the general public to pay attention to what we're doing here. So, you know, whatever we can do, I'm in favor of it. I'm just not sure what the best thing for us as board members to do is. If you have any ideas, I'm willing to go on, go along.
Well, I think communication has always been a struggle of how do we reach the public? How do we voice? I have a couple of thoughts. One would be, can we get some public service messages on the radio stations that would allow us to do it? And maybe volunteer President Humbles to maybe be, so we have, doing it, so we have a variety of voices. And so they're seeing a broader commitment. I appreciate what Superintendent Bush has been doing too. And any opportunity that he can, I think it's great, but we can spread that also around. The other is with our own social media, just making posts on it about the importance, we want to see our kids back in school, we need community help to do it. Some message like that if we post on our own social media sites. That's some ideas that I have.
I think something that could be very effective along the lines of personal messaging, because everybody's personal messaging may vary. But I think we all agree that mask wearing and taking all precautions is really important. And what Superintendent Bush said in that news conference the other day was, in my opinion, the most effective thing that was said in the entire conference. She said, we've got, I'm totally paraphrasing here, you know, pre-K and all the way up, and our teachers can do it, so can you. And I thought that was really powerful, like we're saying that we can do this and many of us do. And instead of, you know, hitting people over the head, let's, you know, let's try that message, like if a preschooler can do it, everybody can do it, kind of thing. But I just, I do think that was an incredibly powerful message that was given that day. And I'd heard her say that in one other setting too. And it's resonating with people, and I think it catches some traction. So really just requoting the superintendent, I think, is one good way to get that message out. And doing that individually as board members in our various capacities, whether we're in our virtual Rotary Call or we're using social media, whatever that is, is really good. Those were good words.
And I think if we do that, we have to make sure we're all saying the same message. And I think that, you know, because we are concerned, and I think that was great, Gary, with the PSAs. I don't know if we could do that to see different faces within the community, but I thought that was a great suggestion. And Superintendent Bush, people are listening when I did see you on TV. And it's just simple, wear your mask, wash, you know. And that's just so important. And stressing the fact, that's how we get our children back into the schools and so they are safe.
Do we have any mechanism or any way for some of our students to produce little, like TikToks? Or I'm out of my element here on the technology, but little short videos about wearing masks that we could then promote on the district's social media and our own personal social media?
I have a group that could probably tackle that. They would love a project like that. So absolutely, I know they, I know our kids, they're amazing. They will outdo whatever we do.
I just think it would be cool if we could have a variety of kids, you know, a number of kids making little short videos that we just all start plastering on our social media.
If no one else has anything, Superintendent, I'd like to go back to another waiver, the discussion about another possible waiver. Is there a way that we can communicate to our families and staff and students, you know, what our decision might be on something like that? You know, prior to, I just don't know, what's the timeframe for informing people on what our decision is? Are we gonna wait until the weekend before the 30th? Can we inform people a week before so people can take it into consideration for their Thanksgiving plans? It's just, I got a lot of whiplash for people, and I think that's just in general how people are feeling right now about everything. But, and you know, we want to make the best decision, so having more data is important, but also giving people that prior notice, I think, would be helpful as well. So what's our plan for that, I guess?
Yeah, so I think that, one, it's the reminder of what are those three major things that I said that have to guide our ability to be able to come back on the 30th, which maybe is also that call to action. In order for us to do this, these are the metrics, which means that we really need people to do their part. And so, and then I would say that we are obviously in school until, a week from tomorrow, right? We'll be up until that Thanksgiving time. And so we absolutely could do that at our end-of-the-week newsletter this week, I think could be a very effective way to do it. I think the metrics are telling us that folks like that format, they like that newsletter, and this is the topic that they're very interested in. And so, and certainly could work with Colleen and our communications team. And just to say, these would be the steps, and this would be when we would know. And the hard part is, as you could see last week, things changed in 12 hours. And so things can change very, very quickly. So even though we want to say we're gonna go on the 30th, it's hard to say unless we have that data. But I think that's a great idea, Director Merschbrach, to give a little heads up, little reminder, and to say we should know by, well, I hope that we know by the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Would it be possible to have kind of a running metrics on, like our website, a kind of a barometer that has those, has those three areas that, like the community health is becoming a concern, you know, that we're rising like a barometer, whatever. You know, it's now, we're at a level that it could be very serious. Our staff issues absentee are reaching a point. It would kind of give, someone could look at it and say, oh, it looks like we could be reaching a critical area. I'd really need to pay attention to what's going on.
So two of those metrics are not our metrics. They're the Lynn County public metrics. So we're taking it from them. Like, that's what I do every morning. The first thing I do is get on Iowa Department of Public Health, click on Lynn County, and I see what the rate is. And then I look at Lynn County Public Health site and see what they're saying. And so the way I find out about the health system is like, it's a phone call. It's not a published data system. So that's how we're, it's the same thing for a weather call. Like, I'm calling Kyle Mara, I'm talking to Scott Wing, and I'm talking to National Weather Service on those mornings. And just huge gather, and then I'm talking to the Metro Superintendent. So it's not, it would be hard to have a dashboard. But we definitely could continue to post already, our dashboard of our staff data. And we could put a link to the Iowa Department of Public Health, the county metrics, because that is an indicator, the percentage, 14% daily average. We could put a link on our site for that.
Just, thank you. Just brainstorming, just trying to, again, communication is just so tough now anymore with how to reach people.
I have a question. I have a question. My reception is bad, so I apologize if it's not coming through. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, good. So I'm wondering, since we're a governing body, since the board is a governing body, as defined by Iowa code and in accordance with the Code of Iowa, if it would be possibly more impactful for us to advocate to the governor? Possibly writing a shared letter, maybe with some other neighboring districts or other organizations, kind of pleading our pleading our case and asking for the mandate to, to shift in focus so that it can better reflect what we need to do to keep our staff and students and families healthy?
I think that's a really interesting idea and I wonder, are we, are we in alignment with our, um, our metro districts on, on that?
So I believe, and this is also been, uh, uh, Lynn Mar and college community are also in the urban education network. And one of the priorities for legislative advocacy was local control decisions, um, from this governing body. And so, um, I know on behalf of those two districts, they also are part of the UEN and, and I think all UEN districts believed in that. And I, I would, I believe that all of our districts would be, um, advocates for that local control. And not, this is probably, um, I know it's very different, but inclement weather is, it is an administrative decision and that's a prime example. If, if I had to get in line with the seven of you at four o'clock in the morning at any inclement weather day, it would be a super big challenge. This is what districts are feeling right now when working with the Department of Ed of trying to get, you know, waivers. And so, and I will say this, they've been supportive. The Department of Ed has been supportive for most of those waivers. If you look on the website, you'll see that they're all being approved within good reason. Um, it's just, it's, it, it delays the decision-making process.
I'm sorry, can I ask you to clarify what, what delays the decision-making process?
It takes, well, they say you have 48 hours till it turns around. And so it just takes, I, I couldn't, so to Dexter's point, it would have been nice next, last Tuesday to say, we're anticipating this happening. Um, and therefore these are, these are going to be the next steps. This is going to be communication. We had to wait for that decision to be made and then had to do a second communication to families. So that can get confusing for them. And so, um, which is why, uh, our communication said at 9:06 AM, we got this approval. So that people knew that we're trying to be on it and the second we heard, we wanted to communicate. So I think that's the delay and not that it hurts to have double communication, like a prep communication and then the, the reality, but it would be nice to be able to have some clarity and ownership.
So I, my, my, uh, follow-up to what Director Borcheting said, I might've been, um, misheard and my audio is not very good tonight either. So I apologize for that. So when she said, you know, would it be as a governing body, um, going together and just sending a letter sort of pleading our case? And I don't know that pleading the case is saying that we want to stay virtual longer, but we want local control. Is that something that we could pursue with the other boards in the area? Um, and are we in alignment in asking for local control? I think that if we talked about extending, uh, virtual learning, we would not necessarily all be in alignment, but we would be in alignment on local control, I think. And is that something that the, the boards of the other schools would potentially be interested in? In signing on with, sending as a, as a, uh, as a joint letter and, and do we think it would help? I, I guess that's the, the, you know, kind of a big undertaking to get everybody on there. Do we think it will make an iota of difference with, with our, our state government?
I always think advocacy is a good idea. We may not get what we ask for, but it's always a good idea. Uh, to say, this is what our intent is. This is where we stand. This is what we believe as a school district. And, and this is what we're advocating for. Uh, um, I would be happy to inquire with the metro area superintendents, but I think again, the UEN has language that this is a priority for the UEN. And I think we could maybe even, uh, grip beyond Cedar Rapids Metro.
I, if I can jump in here, I think, I think, you know, we, we started that process with the letter that we sent to the governor earlier, earlier on. And I do think there's value in increasing, increasing our numbers with either other districts or other community partners, um, that would sign on to a similar letter. And just like Superintendent Bush said, it, it doesn't, I mean, it matters if, if we get our way. But I think it's more important that we're sending a message, a unified message, not only to the governor, but to our state legislators who have input in decisions like this. But I think the more, the more people, the more groups we can, can get to sign on to that letter, the more effective it will be, the more, the more attention it will get.
Well, and I think the timing right now too, as the legislators start meeting, uh, early December about, uh, their platforms and bills and so on, that we look at, uh, we advocate for more defined and, and, uh, the local control. The, uh, they passed, uh, our Home Rule Light, uh, uh, a few years ago, but, uh, it's been, I think somewhat of a quandary of what, what we really were able to get out of that. You know, uh, Superintendent Bush, I liked your discussion about the weather and you having to make that decision. Um, it somewhat relates to this, if we, if you had to go to the governor's office in the Department of Ed, every time we had to do a, a weather-related, uh, uh, impact, uh, you know, it would be very, we'd never get anything done. And, and I think this is a very similar case too. We're being impacted locally. We're being impacted different than, you know, uh, Sioux City, Waterloo or whatever, you know? Just like with the weather impact, uh, we may have to shut down, but, uh, but Iowa City could continue to do it because of their factors. So I, I think it's very related that we have a, a basis for, uh, the action that we want to accomplish to have more local control out of this, so.
Gary, I think you make a really good point. We, uh, we have talked many times over the years about contacting our local legislators prior to the, uh, session beginning. Because once the session begins, it's difficult to try to, uh, get that information out there when many of the decisions have already had some forethought and movement. So I think you make a really good point. Now would be the time to do that.
I agree. And the, I do want to say that I am very appreciative of the Department of Ed being supportive of the waivers that we've requested. Also, they've been supportive of our DeRachio situation. Um, I will just say that they're, they're, um, just like we have faced budget cuts, they are down to a very slim group of people. And, um, it's just a lot for them to manage right now as well. To me, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to burden them with this as well when we have you as a governing body and the administrative team to help manage that we, we could make very responsible decisions here locally. And I, I, I have all the confidence in the world that we could do this and put, take a burden off the Department of Ed. And we might need to fill something out and, and inform them, but, um, it, it would be helpful for them, I would imagine as well, just as an additional angle.
It's really interesting. I hadn't thought of it that way.
All right. Uh, just to, to let you all know that, um, I did reach out to all of our newly, all of, all of the area legislators who were up for election, um, earlier this month. Just congratulating them, uh, telling them that the Urban Education Network had established some priorities and that I would be getting back in touch with them about those. And I will do that, um, here shortly. But yeah, I think, um, some of the legislators are very open to meeting with us and having a conversation with us. And I, I know we run into situations with the open meetings law, but if we could divide up into small groups maybe and meet with various area legislators, I think all of our legislators here are going to be very supportive, frankly. But we should, we should make sure that they know what we're advocating for. So even though they'll be supportive, it's important that we, we visit with them. But I can, I can work on getting that all figured out.
We had it. That would, that would be really great that if we could meet in the small groups, so they do hear our voice. So I appreciate that. Yep.
We had a, uh, there, uh, at one time there was a education, um, uh, metro education superintendent, uh, legislative meetings that were held. Um, I'm not sure they were held last year. If I remember right, I'm not sure. But is there anything on the, on the horizon to do that again?
We did do that. Uh, it was, uh, just a superintendent's and we did it in, uh, kind of a small group, um, conversation at Grantwood AEA. Uh, and we held several of those. And then even, um, John Spear and I even met with a couple of folks, uh, over coffee, um, with the additional legislators who couldn't make that group session. So yes, we do meet with them and that will be coming up. Um, I remember last year that was a heavy January season.
Yeah. I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, there could be, um, board members that could be, um, without creating a quorum or too large a group, uh, that would go beyond just superintendents, but also some board input too. I would, I would like to, uh, bring, because we're, we're, uh, more than halfway done. I'd talk about the return to learn process and going back. And, and one of the concerns that I have is that we have, um, our, our student teacher ratio, um, where we've, where we've been and, uh, and the online, um, also student teacher. You know, we, we altered our model of the ratio of what we had as far as student to teacher ratio when we, um, we went to the, this COVID, um, initiative, working with it, where we had, uh, I don't know, it was like 21, 22 students, you know, at the elementary, lower elementary level. Well, we've, we've lowered the class size, um, by doing that and some of it by transferring them to, to, uh, online. But, um, it just makes sense to me that we should have more staff. If you have a lower ratio, you're going to need more bodies in order to, uh, in order to do it. And, um, I'm a little concerned and I've heard one side and I guess I'd like to hear yours. We've heard the, most of the board, I think, heard from ELL teachers about, uh, siphoning off, I guess, a couple of teachers to, to work online. My feeling is just from hearing that, their side is that that's a very specialized group. Uh, you know, we don't find ELL teachers a dime a dozen. They're, they're, they're difficult. And there certainly is a need, uh, with our ELL population. So I, I really don't like that idea, but there may be more to it. Uh, one of the things I, I don't know, are they working with just DLL students online? Or is it the general public?
So, and I know that, um, our executive directors are attending tonight and I may lean on some of them to get into a little bit of the detail around some of, some of that staffing. Uh, just, uh, it has been incredibly complex. And then also you all know that, um, we've lost students this year. We have fewer students, but not less staff. We have the same amount of staff as we had last year, but we have a significant fewer number of students. So you start to scratch your head saying, oh, how could all that happen? It's very similar to the reasons why we, the facility master plan, um, started. Is that when you start just slicing up the pie into more and more pieces, you still have to have people to staff it. And it gets so, so complex. And so, uh, our, I just can't, I know you know this. I cannot say enough about how incredibly hard our staff is working at every single component of this organization. It's working so, so hard to serve kids every single day. And it is taxing, taxing, taxing. So we've shifted resources. I think you know this, but we've shifted our resources and, um, our teacher leaders are now co-teaching, uh, or directly teaching. Uh, we've had to pull from those positions and put them into, right in front of kids, direct service to kids. We also know the whole time, this little, this little things in the back of our mind is, this is just a pandemic solution. We need to get through the next few months. And I can't think of better people to put in front of our kids than our teachers. So what we have to do is put some other work on pause or hold. And then the executive directors, deputy superintendent have taken on those duties from the teacher leaders or are working in collaboration with them. I've offered to facilitate some curriculum things, um, as well with some of those teacher leaders that they're afraid that they weren't going to get it done. And I'm like, I used to do that. I could do that. So we're all trying to help each other so that we can provide more support to that direct instruction. Director Ann Holt, there is no great answer here, but I will tell you, because of the enrollment situation and because of the cost of COVID, which we really won't know till we're through this year, we cannot afford more staff. If we did a one-time cost, just so you know, we're going to have to pay for it later. And I do not want to be in a situation next year where we are faced making really hard decisions as we had to five or six years ago. Um, so what can we do to help provide support now? So that we don't have to make really tough decisions come next year? Which may, we may have to face anyway. Um, but, uh, I, I, yeah, it's so tough.
Is it possible to, I, I think, I, I know it's always been, at least my history, that, uh, a reluctance on, on hiring staff in that it becomes a, a, a long-term, uh, uh, burden on budget. Can they, can, can we hire, I don't know the, the legis, legality of it or logistics, but can we hire on just a very temporary, you know, so we're not incurring a, a, a long-term budget? Would, could we afford to do that?
So we could do.
We do have some surplus, I know.
We, we can do long-term sub agreements. One, we have to find the people. So that's our other challenge is we just don't have people, like we don't, we're not filling sub jobs now. Uh, we've got permanent sub positions that are not fulfilled, para-positions that are not filled. Um, uh, we had, you know, you, we, you know, we lost 20 drivers who resigned from last year to this year. So it's, it's every employee group, not just teachers where we are hurting. Um, and, and so we absolutely could, if we could fill some of our current jobs, I think we would feel a little less strain and pain. Uh, but we are struggling like every district. It's, it's, it's a challenge. Uh, I will say, um, and Dave Nicholson has done a great job of keeping you updated. But, you know, over the past four years, I think we've added, is it 12 or 14 ELL staff, Dave Nicholson? I can't remember, but quite a few. Um, so we absolutely, um, that, and that's, and we can go back to SBRC for, you know, those kinds of, for, uh, both ELL and special ed. And we definitely keep staffing that. Absolutely. We could keep considering those staffing areas.
Could I ask about the, the loss of students? I was a little, uh, little confused, I guess, from when that came out. It, it sounded like there was an ability to, to be able to use last year's student count instead of this year's. Is that correct?
We don't, we don't, we don't know yet. So Grantwood AEA superintendents, that was a discussion was, is that going to be possible? So as we look at advocacy at the legislative level, I would say, looking beyond SSA, could we also ask to certify last year's enrollment? And if a district had, was it, I've heard of a district that gained eight students. So districts who had a gain, maybe they certify this year's enrollment, but that would not be a cost to the state. It would be the same budget as this year. And then the following year, then we could plan it depending on what next year's enrollment is. But we're all in a crisis here and, um, you know, our, our UEN districts especially are hurting. So that was another discussion is would that even be possible? Because it wouldn't cost the state anything more than what this year cost.
Sounds like something to add to that, uh, our talk with our legislators. And, oh gosh, I lost it. There was one. I, I'll come back. I did, there was one other thing, but.
As it stands today, we would be on a budget guarantee for next year.
As it stands today, we would be on a budget guarantee for next year. And for example, if we had a, the state did a supplemental state aid at 1%, we would have approximately $4.3 million budget guarantee. But if the, if the state did not do any increase, we would be a $5 million budget guarantee. Which, which means is, that's a 1% budget guarantee is based on 1%. So they say, when you have declined enrollment, you'll be guaranteed one year of 1% growth. And, and that is all funded with property tax. Property tax increase to cover that expense, so.
Related to the students who, I think the words from the email, we just, we just don't know where they are. They're not showing up as the district. I, that, that part of it kind of shocked me. And I know that our district is doing everything we can to reach out to those parents. Is there, I mean, school is compulsory, right? Is there anything that is being done outside of our district? Or, you know, I hate to even bring this up, that through DHS or anything, to find these kids? Like, I worry they're in danger. You know, we don't have teachers putting eyeballs on them, and.
Yep. Yeah, I would say that majority of our data, we're able to at least see that they got enrolled somewhere, but we have.
Oh, okay.
But, but we have students who we don't know, they didn't enroll. So this is our assumption, is they've continued to homeschool, but they're not doing one of our homeschool options. They're doing their own homeschool option. And so this is what I, we've been asking, other districts are facing the same issue. I talked to the superintendent, Iowa City briefly about this as well. We're not sure. And so the assumption is that when our doors are back open for regular business, and we're all in a better scenario, that they'll come back to us. But it's hard to tell. And this is a statewide issue. It is, and it's national, it's a national issue. It's, yeah, really, really concerning.
Can I ask a clarifying question there about homeschooling? My understanding, and I just want to make sure that I'm correct, and, and the board understands, too, that state law doesn't require parents to report homeschooling to any government body, right? So if I, as a parent, just make a unilateral decision to homeschool my child, I don't have to tell anyone. I, there is no responsibility on me as the parent to let anyone know that that's happening. And that's a legislative issue. Because I believe at one time, it was required that all the kids be accounted for, that schools knew where all the kids were. And that, that law has changed. So that does create definite concern about the well-being of our kids.
Yep. There's, if you independently homeschool, and it's not a, like, we have our certified homeschool, that is a possibility. So it is concerning. And I will say that absolutely, parents have choices, and, and this is not discrediting the choice. It's the fact that we want to make sure that the kids are getting what they need. And so, and that sometimes people don't know that we have a homeschool program as a school district, and we absolutely want to provide that service to our families.
I have a, just a final question on my behalf. And I'm just wondering, what is an appropriate way that we, as a governing body, can show support and honor the work, that, the tremendous work that management has done in relation to COVID? The, the work's been fantastic, ongoing trend-setting, to the point where other districts have asked to see what our framework is, because we are very evolved, and, and the district, the management of this was fantastic. Just wondering, as a governing body, what we can do to support that?
Well, thank you for that. And it's not perfect. I think we've tried to be, we have shifted quite a bit. And, and, you know, you can create plans, and the best-laid plans, some, best-laid plans usually have backup and flexibility. I think, as we've had to learn, is just to be flexible. And so it is incredibly frustrating for families, and rightly so. And, and because they're, they're shifting with us, and so I think that's the, providing support for our families who lean on you, call you, say, help me, I'm struggling, and being that ear for them, understanding, you know, how, the how things are happening. And then also, I think probably, what do we need to do to also keep you informed or better information? I was thinking the other day, I said, well, sometimes I do all, all written updates, and maybe it's easy for you to get a video update, too. It's like, I don't have time to read it, but I'd have time to listen to it or watch it, whatever we needed to better equip you. But I, I would say that, thank you for being a governing body, and, and we're trying to, we're facing into the organization and really trying to help our, our staff and our kids. And then you're out, out of, in the community, and you'll hear the voices, and we need to know that, and, and what we need to be able to do to be more responsive.
Just in, in follow-up to that, I, I just, again, wanted to make sure that we're clear here that this is a business about relationships. And, and when we're getting feedback from community members that have students, I, I think it's best to, to refer them to their building administrator, because that's the person that they have the relationship, not with me. As it should be, because that, that is, that is the administrator that's ushering their child through education. So just wanting to be clear there, that, that when we are hearing from, from families, that we refer them back to building administration. And also, when we're hearing from staff, we refer them to building administration or their union.
Yeah, absolutely. And you're, you're spot-on. Principal's the sweet spot of manning those ships, and, and families have the relationships with their schools, absolutely.
I just like-
Oh, go ahead. Keep going.
Okay. I just wanted to say one last thing, you know, in the moment we are in now, we're going to hear from the governor. We've got families who are probably struggling, you know, with the move to online school. They, you know, chose in person because they depend on us to be there for their kids. And so going back to the idea of advocacy, I'm wondering, you know, moving past tonight, if the rest of the board and the district, talk about advocacy, not for just local control. It seems like, you know, when the numbers got bad enough, we were approved for the waiver, no problem. But we could be in for a long winter. It's really uncertain in the community right now, and people need support. And so from the state, from our federal government, can we do advocacy as a board, again, with the other districts around us and around the state, saying, what help we can get as a district, what help we can get to our families to help us get through this health crisis? You know, everything helps, and we want action at the federal level, if necessary, you know, to help out and help people get healthy through the winter, and help us, as a district, provide a great education while we're doing that. And so that's the last thing I wanted to say, and just put in everybody's, you know, on everyone's radar.
Yeah, Dexter, I would say absolutely, if you're speaking, like, about financial resources for whatever our families need, I, I think most of that would come from the federal government, and then disseminated through the state government. But, so yeah, that's another layer of advocacy with our federal senators and our, our congresswoman, so, for sure.
I was late to the party here today. Did want to just thank you, Superintendent Bush, and the, the staff and, and the rest of the board for just being willing to have conversations. Sometimes it's easier than a, a written update or watching a video to just have a conversation and hear the, you know, the, the context behind it. And tone of voice alone can provide so much context to what people are going through. So I just really appreciate it, and, and I hope we can continue to have conversations where we're allowed to ask questions and have conversations about what's going to happen going forward and be a part of it. But thank you so much, and, and also, congratulations on being nominated for that award. That's really cool.
And I would like to thank Superintendent Bush, the administration, for all of you, for all the work that you have been doing. These are tough times. We are getting through it. I appreciate the leadership. I know every day is changing. And so I thank you, and can't thank you enough, because I know that this is tough, but you guys are doing a great job, and you are looking out for each and every one of us and everyone that is involved in our district. So I do thank you. And it is 6 o'clock. And I know at 6:05, the governor comes on, so I, I hate to end it, but I'm going to.
Well, thank you all for the discussion, and also, don't hesitate to email additional questions and things to me and President Humble. We'd be glad to get back with additional questions. Love the thoughts around advocacy. We're going to get through it, we're going to get through it, we're going to get through it, and we'll be better on the other side. We'll have things that we never dreamt of before, so.
And with no further business, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.